Okay, welcome everyone to the August 3rd study session of the Lakewood City Council here in Lakewood, Colorado. Thank you all for joining us. As you can see, I am not Mayor Adam Paul. I will be filling in tonight as your pro tem. First things first, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Paul, Skilling.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Bita.
Here.
Frankstein.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I am here.
Labir.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The, uh, tonight is a study session, so as we all know, a public comment will come uh, once those items are called so that the public can participate in our discussion. Let me give that phone number now and I'll give it a couple of times tonight. The phone number for calling in for public comment is 1-346-248-7799. Web ID is 973-6627-2611. And press star after entering the web ID and star, or I'm sorry, pound after the web ID and pound again once more to join the meeting and then star nine to request to speak. Uh, the first item on the agenda for night's study session is item three, which is the clarification of the blight definition and for that, we will invite our economic, our Director of Economic Development, Robert Smith.
Okay, I am fully entering into the waiting area. Thank you so much for the introduction. Very much appreciate. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am in fact, Robert Smith with the Economic Development Office here in the city of Lakewood. Item number three is a consideration of a resolution that will happen next week. Um, that resolution and I apologize. I thank you very much for taking some time on the agenda tonight to consider this item or think about this item a little bit more. Um, but there's a lot of numbers in the labeling of these things, so I'll do my best to make sure that we're talking about the right things. But the resolution that's to be considered next week is Resolution 202024, so we'll just call that 24. And what it does is it, it amends or modifies a resolution that council approved earlier in the year in January, just before all the COVID-19 stuff hit. So, um, seems like almost a lifetime ago and so we thought we would reset the, uh, reset the agenda here and make sure folks were aware of what this resolution does. Um, it will, I will add a, to the original resolution, that's Resolution Number Seven. Uh, it will add two sections to that, sections five and six, uh, on that. So if you vote to approve that, uh, that Resolution Number 24 next week, it will add those to the Number Seven resolution. If you don't vote to approve that, then the Number Seven resolution will stay just as it was approved back in January. Um, just, uh, to, by way of reference or notification, it's a, it was the, uh, the two sections are authored by a council member, Bita, and one that council briefly and recently discussed on the, in the July 6th meeting. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew what those sections were. Uh, but allow me to back up just a little bit and reset the whole stage of, if you will, because it involves a 1427 blight definition, the definition for 1427. So, you'll recall that, uh, in July of last year, 13 months ago, we, uh, we, uh, gave the electorate or the electorate took the opportunity to vote on an initiative, uh, with, uh, with strategic growth, um, that was known as Question 200. Question 200 passed, uh, was approved by the electorate. We put it into the Lakewood Municipal Code as Chapter 14. And, uh, from there, one of the things that 1427 allowed for, we didn't do any modifications from the language of the, uh, the amendment, just the way it was written. Um, but what did it allow for is resolutions that would allow for some clarification of, of certain items in there. You'll recall that there were a couple of places where the words, uh, blight or, or blighted areas, that sort of a thing were involved with that. But it wasn't defined within the context of the, of the ordinance. So with some robust discussion, uh, last summer and last fall, uh, those things were, uh, decided and how that blight would affect under 1427 designation. Uh, and you'll recall that, uh, blight was anywhere there was an urban renewal area, uh, previously established. Now those areas are along Colfax Avenue for the most part and along Alameda, those are the places where the urban renewal areas are established. So, uh, for the purposes of blight for 1427, it meant those urban renewal areas. But council also allowed for a process for, uh, property owners to come forward, do a blight designation under their own dime and then, uh, come forward, use the exact same definitions, the exact same process, um, and do all of those things to come forward to have the council consider a blight designation for the purposes of implementing Chapters 1427. Very important to understand that it doesn't connote any urban renewal, uh, connotations to the property. It's only for the purposes of 1427. So that's available. Uh, we do have a couple of properties that are going to move forward with that, that request in the, uh, in the very near future. In fact, we'll hear from one of them very shortly. Um, but with regard to the ordinance next week, if you vote to approve that ordinance, it adds, checks, uh, sections five and six to the original ordinance of, uh, or, excuse me, the original Resolution Number Seven. Um, check sections five and six basically deal with the, the notion of that the purpose of the, of, of the 1427 blight designation is not to get around the allocation system. It's not to allow your property to become dilapidated or vacant, uh, just for a very rapidly deteriorated rate so that you can, uh, come to council with this designation. It also contemplates a timing of it. How long has the property been vacant? How long has the property been dilapidated? How long, uh, has the property essentially been blighted? So, but, uh, the, uh, resolution will do, uh, uh, we'll, uh, mention real quickly that I did check Lakewood Speaks a little earlier this evening. There were no comments on this particular item, uh, so far to answer our address. So, uh, I'll conclude that with about, uh, let's see, four minutes and 38 seconds of, of your agenda already consumed with that, uh, and be happy to answer any questions council may have with regard to that item.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Before we go to public comment, uh, we have a couple of hands up. Let's go to Counselor Bita, since this was something that you had brought forward. Uh, Mr. Bita.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. So I think, uh, this was pretty well covered in, in the staff presentation. Um, I hopefully you all got a copy of the resolution that's going to be presented next week for a vote. It wasn't included in tonight's packet, but, um, I, I note that our clerk did send you a email, um, late today with, with the actual language of the resolution. And, and it basically says, you know, legally is exactly what, what your, uh, Director, Robert Smith, just said. Um, I just would like to clarify that this is not an ordinance, it's a resolution. It's basically ties into the original resolution that we passed in January that was done as a, um, kind of a rule type, uh, resolution to help clarify the ordinance, but it, it did not take the status of a language change of the ordinance itself. So the ordinance, I want to make it sure is intact. 200 is intact. It's not, it's not been changed in any way. This does not change the original, uh, ordinance in any way. It's basically just a rule or a clarification to help guide council and staff in making these blight determinations. And I think it's pretty much self-explanatory that, um, the, uh, one of the, uh, uh, parts of the resolutions say, states that whereas the blighted, the term blighted as currently used in the Strategic Growth Initiative may have the unintended effect of leaving the door open to property owners deliberately allowing their properties to fall into, into disrepair so as to avoid the permit allocation process. Well, that's part of, I think that's really key to the resolution and we are seeing some of that going on or potentially going on. I mean, it's, I can't really say it's happening, but there are properties that are around the city. There's several of them now that we're hearing about, uh, who are going into further and further states of disrepair. And I'm not going to mention that, mention them by address, but there's a number of them and we've been, some of us have been getting emails about them. So I think this is just an opportunity to kind of let the public know that we are going to be watching for this kind of thing and to give us the tools if and when necessary to, um, to apply them as, as appropriate. So that, that's about all I have to say. I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Counselor Vincent?
Yeah, hi. Um, thank you. Um, Counselor Bita, I was just hoping that, because you know, this could have some impact on Ward Two, obviously. Um, and I haven't had a lot of time to digest this, nor do I think we've had a lot of discussion about it. On the top of it, I don't see anything really wrong with it. Um, but if, as I read this more, is it okay if I reach out to you individually so you can answer some questions prior to next Monday?
You're on mute, Counselor Bita.
Sorry. Yes, uh, I think that's appropriate as, uh, and I'm certainly willing to do that. And I, I believe that's appropriate unless somebody knows something I don't.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure.
I'll digest it.
Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. Um, I just had one kind of initial question here. Um, and I'm not sure whether to address, who to address here, but basically, I'm just trying to understand the enforceability or kind of the tools that, um, you just mentioned, Counselor Bita. You know, if, if we were to kind of suspect that this was going on, what, what do you see are the potential actions or what legally are our potential actions?
Well, as I understand it, we, we have to make the ultimate decision as to whether a, a property is blighted. So this would factor into our decision. We, if we as a council were to see a situation where the evidence was apparent to us that this, the, the property was being allowed to, to slide into a blighted state in order to, to, uh, avoid the consequences of, of 200, we as a council would have the authority under 200 to, as I understand it, the way I read it, to deny their, uh, blight status. So it's just that simple. We can, if we were to find this were to be the case, we would have the authority to deny it. If we don't think that's the case and it's a legitimate blighted situation, then we grant if all the other factors are met. So there's really not any enforceability as far as the city is concerned, other than just a finding by.
Council.
Council. Yes or no?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Labir?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is also probably for Counselor Bita, but you know, you mentioned, this kind of gives us an extra tool. My question is, don't we already have that ability? Can we just make those determinations? And wouldn't you also just factor that in with or without this additional resolution? I'm just, just curious. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, to the extent that we, I mean, we do already have that authority under 200 to give an up or down vote on whether that's a property qualifies for blighted status. So to that, to the extent that's your question, the answer is yes. Um, and I suppose in there, we, we could talk about that in the discussion, but there's nothing that, there's no language in 200 which addresses this particular situation. So, you know, we'd be going out a little bit on a limb if we started considering evidence in my mind about this, about, uh, a situation where there was an intentional blight situation. You know, there's nothing really in the, in the, in the law that says that eliminates, uh, the, uh, you know, the prospective petitioner. There's nothing in the law that says that if they did it intentionally, they're, they're eliminated. So this really kind of puts that in focus and says, we now can make that finding as part of the entire finding. So it, it just kind of gives us a, a, something to work with where otherwise we're kind of out there on a limb without it. You know, and, you know, people could bring it up and make that objection, but where in the law does it really say that is even a factor? I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, I, I think it could add some value in that it gives some sort of maybe clarity or direction to any prospective, uh, people who might want to utilize this provision in the law. I think I could see that. Um, but I imagine, I feel like we'll probably hear soon when we start talking about this next property that wants to be blighted. I'm sure we're going to hear all sorts of factors that maybe aren't articulated in the law, but I appreciate, appreciate the clarity on that.
Yeah, if I could, I think this just kind of requires good faith, basically.
Yeah.
By the applicant. I mean, to make it sort of a broad statement, it requires some good faith.
Thanks, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Counselor Harrison? You're on mute. Hang on one second. There you go. You're still muted.
Okay, now I can, you can hear me. That's really strange for me to talk and you guys not to hear me. That is amazing, scary, but amazing. Um, my question would be, is what criteria? Are we just going to use code? What are we going to use to identify when we think a property owner is on purpose, um, allowing the property to, to go into disrepair? Are we just going to use what our code says? Um, what, what are we going to use for criteria? I'm not opposed. Please don't hear that I'm opposed. I'm just saying if we're going to say that, I think we need to have something to lean on as well.
Mr. Bita, do you want to respond to that or?
Yeah, sure, I will. Thank you. So Section Five, I think, addresses that. It says if the, if it is determined, uh, that a property owner has failed to reasonably keep their property safe, secure, sanitary and in good condition and repair, or has otherwise failed to comply with the zoning requirements of the, uh, LMC, Lakewood Municipal Code. So that's, um, uh, that, that's one. And then the, the second part, uh, uh, answer to your question, um, in determining, uh, whether a property is blighted, um, in addition to the factors set forth in, in the, in the state statutes, uh, the city council shall consider the length of time the property has been vacated or deteriorated, the reason for the vacant or deteriorated condition of the property, the condition of the neighborhood surrounding the property and the marketability of the property. So the, the resolution gives you some specific criteria to consider, um, in making your determination of whether this was an intentional blight situation or whether it was something that occurred over a long period of time and is, uh, was, um, unintentionally occurring. So it does set criteria.
It, and as long as that's enforceable, I would, I would definitely support this. Thank you.
Mr. Abel, Mr. Abel?
Eric. Uh, I see this as just a way to keep people from gaming the system. Uh, there are plenty of ways to game it to start with, but this would give us an extra safety valve in case, uh, that, that became a clearer motivation for a blighted property. So I will certainly be supporting the resolution when it comes to us. Thank you.
Mr., uh, Mr. Cox or Mr. Smith, anything to Counselor Harrison's point on the enforceability?
Um, no, I don't think so because as Counselor, Counselor Bita said, the, the point in the process at which this is applied is when the city council is making that determination about blight. And what this really says is, we might find blighted conditions, but if that blight is the But if that blight is the result of an intentional attempt to, as Mr. Abel said, game the system, uh, you have the ability to say, yes, your property is in disrepair, but the circumstances that put it there are suspect, and you've not acted in good faith uh in in that process. So i- it really provides more criteria, more opportunity to tie the decision directly to some of the facts that are presented uh in the blight determination.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, and I really want to thank Counselor Bita for putting this out there. I too feel like this is a, an area that could be gamed. I have spoken with Counselor Bita, and on the first page under Section Five, on the uh fifth um pair, or the fifth line down, it says if it determines that a property owner has failed to reasonably keep, and I'd like to know if there's a possibility to strike the word reasonably. That's very vague, and you either keep it or you don't. Uh, so that would be my only suggestion for this is to to remove that word. Your take on that, Counselor Bita?
May I answer that?
Yes, please.
I would consider that a friendly amendment, and I I would accept that.
Thank you.
So we can either handle that one of two ways. We could either get consensus that that's the way we're going to go. Since we're not voting on it tonight, uh, we may just want to keep that as an amendment that we make. I could go either way with it. Seems like it might be cleaner, because there could be other amendments. We've heard at least from Counselor Labir, uh, or, I'm sorry, Counselor Vincent, that was going to talk directly to Counselor Bita. And there could be other amendments as well, so especially something like that, um, that's certainly going to be noted. It will be one amendment, Counselor Johnson's amendment, but it might be cleaner to do any of that wordsmithing uh next week when we're voting on it. Is that acceptable to you, Counselor Johnson?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, I'm going to go ahead, and I don't see anyone else's hands up. I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item. Um, before I do, let me just read that phone number just one more time. So the folks either want to call in on this item or the next one. That phone number is three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. Web ID is nine seven three six six two seven two six one one. Press pound after entering the web ID and press pound again to join the meeting, and then star nine to request to speak. Do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak?
We do not have anyone in the queue with their hand raised.
Let's wait a few seconds. Now, the the second item tonight somewhat dovetails into this one, so if there's uh any questions on it, I'm sure we can entertain that too from the public.
We have uh Paul Stan with his hand raised.
Okay. Mr. Stan, welcome. If you'll give us uh your ward, and you do have three minutes, I will give you a thirty second warning when your three minutes is about to expire.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Zilling and the rest of the council members. Um, tonight, uh, where you would like to uh take some time to make a uh request and a presentation uh on the parcel thirteen forty-seven Lamar Street uh to uh receive a blighted designation. Um, we have engaged the Matrix Consultant Group to um make a presentation.
Mr. Stan, I hate to interrupt you. I think that you're actually, uh, you're actually on the next item, which is specific to that property. So if you could hold off, stay on the line, and we'll have a presentation on Item Five, which is uh, mentions this specific property as part of a broader conversation on this. Is it okay if you just hold on the line and check back in with us uh on the next item?
That would be perfect. Sorry for interrupting.
No, no problem. Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else?
There's no one else.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I guess let's move on to Item Five. Mr. Smith, this is you again.
Uh, Mr. Smith Show, I guess. I uh appreciate that very much. Thank you for taking the time for a uh longer look at this item uh by first including it in a study session uh this evening. Uh, next week, uh, Council will consider the first fourteen twenty-seven blight designation. Um, and that request will be happening for the property that Mr. Stan mentioned at thirteen forty-seven Lamar Street. Now, typically, we'll be bringing these considerations to you uh in the form of a resolution in a single meeting. But because this is the first uh that we worked on this, we thought it may be helpful to give you ample opportunity for for questions and process considerations, just so that we we make sure that when we bring it to you, the the package is relatively complete. Um, we'll have the consultant run through the main points of of the blight study here in just a moment. Uh, and just so you know, uh, Matrix, uh, the consultants on this particular property, just coincidentally, they're they're one of the most experienced firms uh in the metro area on blight study. Uh, so they they certainly can answer a lot of generalized questions uh on there, and I'm certainly can also address just a little bit in terms of uh the fact that a short period of time probably doesn't get you to a blight finding in an actual blight study with a reputable consultant, just so you, so you know that piece of it as well. Uh, the fourteen twenty-seven blight designation, uh, the process is almost identical to the urban renewal blight process. It may be just a little bit different, so uh we we'll have an opportunity uh to uh take a look at all of these things this evening and all learn together on that, on that process. So uh, very similar to the way in which uh the urban renewal goes. So the report that you have, you have the report in your packet this evening that you can uh refer to. As I mentioned, the consultant will go through it. I'll talk a little bit about what's in the staff report here, so that you'll know what to expect with any of these that come forward in the future. Uh, in about the middle of your staff report, there is a table in there that outlines all of the elements of Resolution Number Seven, twenty twenty-seven, the one that we're uh contemplating amending for next week. But seven has certain criteria that applicants need to meet, and so the table in the middle of your staff report basically puts those questions forward and where they met. So I'll run through them real quick. Uh, was the condition survey the blight study? Condition survey and blight study are synonymous in this case, uh, conducted by an independent consultant. Um, and it was uh subject to the property owners uh commissioning that survey or paying for that survey. The answer to that question is yes. So in this case, that's yes to that one. And of course, on this table, you would want all of these questions answered as yes. Uh, the next one is, was the blight connection uh survey conducted uh with the strict alignment with the uh the urban renewal statutes and determination of a blighted area? The answer to that question is yes. They they follow that same sort of procedure. Uh, next question is, were the property owners informed? The condition survey report will need to be scheduled for and presented to City Council at a public hearing uh by the property owners and the independent consultant. The answer to that is yes. They're here this evening to to talk about that, and they'll be back again next week for for the uh the formal consideration of this. Uh, uh, were the property owners informed upon presentation of the condition survey report that City Council could determine whether sufficient conditions of blight consistent with the state urban renewal law exist to designate the property blighted for the purposes of fourteen twenty-seven? Uh, the answer to that question is yes, and just so as a reminder, uh, in order to designate an urban renewal area, you generally need four conditions of blight. This particular property has six, so it's well above uh that level. Uh, you may hear from time to time from urban renewal uh statute that if a property owner wants to voluntarily enter into an urban renewal area, they only need to meet one condition of blight. Um, wouldn't necessarily apply here, because Council's already said four conditions of blight is what kind of the minimum standard, the bar that you want to to hit. This property does in fact do that. Uh, the, uh, were the property owners informed that such designation of blight uh were to occur would only apply to implementing Chapter fourteen twenty-seven and wouldn't connote or denote or anything like that, any urban renewal status for the property? The answer to that question is yes. Uh, they did, were informed of that. Were the property owners informed that Council's fourteen twenty-seven blight designation or determination would sunset in a defined number of years? The answer to that is yes as well. Uh, were the property owners informed that the determination would not change the tax collection or the ability to use the power of eminent domain? Answer to that is yes, status of it doesn't change. Um, and were they informed that uh fourteen twenty-seven determination would bring the property under the Lakewood Urban Renewal Authority or the LRA uh under their their guise there? So all of those things were satisfied. All of the conditions are yes. That's what you would want to see in that table each and every time um that you see it. As I mentioned, there are six uh conditions of blight, and the consultant will run through those and tell you how those are determined and how those are assessed uh along the way. Um, that's in the report. The staff report also indicates those things as well as the the report there. I won't go through all of these, but I'll mention a couple of them. One is that this particular property is located less than five hundred feet from the existing West Colfax Avenue re uh reinvestment area or the URA up there. So it's five hundred feet away. Um, I would venture a guess that many people would suspect that it is already in the urban renewal area. It's that close. It just happens to be outside the boundary uh by that short distance. Um, it's also along the light rail, uh, and it's along the art line, and of course, we don't want blight anywhere in our city, but uh we particularly don't want it along the light rail, because that's a an amenity that we want to make certain is uh is got as much activity or associated with it as possible. And then the art line, we invest a lot of time, energy, and effort into the art line and want those properties to to, you know, be upkept and and have investment come to those properties. Uh, this uh, this area is located in the Colorado Enterprise Zone, which means that the state has done some analysis on this particular area and has come to the determination that there is a uh higher than average unemployment in this area. There's a higher poverty rate, uh, lower incomes, and that uh engaging in strategies to try to encour- encourage jobs, growth, investment, are all valuable things to do under the Enterprise Zone program. It's in a federal opportunity zone, and the feds did a similar analysis of this property, this area, at the same time, in order to come to those determinations. Uh, again, six of the eleven factors are are met. The presence of four is uh is required of the baseline there. And I will quickly point out that the, if the property does receive a fourteen twenty-seven blight designation next week, it doesn't change the zoning of there, or it doesn't grant additional entitlements. The property still has to be in alignment with the with the uh traditional historical zoning for that property. So there's not an additional entitlement that comes from this fourteen twenty-seven. It's only in the application of of a processing of fourteen twenty-seven requests for this property. Uh, I did review the Lakewood Speaks for this particular item on the calendar. There were no comments to be resolved on that uh that uh initiative. Of course, it'll still be up on the calendar for next week's agenda, and the public can comment on it at that point as well. Um, and with that, I would like to introduce the guests that we have sitting in our uh our waiting room, so that they can uh do some uh a presentation of this property. Uh, take a few minutes of your time to get that done. Um, and then we'll have an opportunity for uh Council to ask question of the consultants, of the property owners, of the staff, um, just to make certain that we get all of those questions answered, so that you feel comfortable when we bring these in a resolution format, in a one-meeting format, that that we've addressed the issues that are most salient and most important to you. So with that, I will uh let you know that we've got folks in the uh in the waiting room to do this presentation. And again, we'll be happy to take questions after the presentation.
Mayor Protem, a point of order?
Counselor Abel?
Yes, sir, perhaps a point of information. It seems as if we're talking about giving the applicant two bites of the apple. What is the objective tonight? How will tonight end? Will we be deciding to move this uh for asking for consensus to move this along to uh resolution next week? Will we be asking questions that will be answered tonight and then answered again next week? I'm just not sure why we have two sessions on this uh resolution. Could you explain, please?
My understanding of this, um, and anyone can feel free to uh interject further. My understanding was that this study session was to talk about the overall process by using this particular application as somewhat of a of a guide in that this presents us with a good opportunity to understand what these applications will look like in the future. Um, that we will not be voting on anything tonight. I don't even think that there was uh any consensus, I believe, and Ms. Hodson can correct me if I'm wrong, that this is an agenda item for resolution coming next week, similar to Mr. Bita's resolution. Those are both calendared for the regular meeting on the tenth. It's a little bit odd, because we are talking about a specific property. Um, so that's a little strange in and of itself. However, um, I think the goal was to provide an educational or informative session and actually have something tangible to look at. Understanding that we will be voting on this next week.
It sounds like to me that we're going to be asking the questions tonight, and we'll get some responses, and then we'll have the same questions next week, and they will have longer time to think about how they want to answer the questions we asked tonight. Uh, that seems like two bites at the apple. And I'm not sure it's even proper.
Well, let let me add a little clarification. So since this is our the first opportunity to have a conversation around blight, we we were concerned about, we were concerned that if we just brought it for a resolution without any um further information, that we would be in a tough position. So what we thought is we could take advantage of the fact that there's one in front of us, and rather than really focus on the project itself, we wanted to talk about the determination of the blight elements or the criteria, so that Council would have a really good understanding of of how that's done from the consultant. When you ha- when we hire a consultant, when the um developer hires a consultant, what is that process that they go through to help us as a council understand what that criteria is? So it's, it's, it really ideally, it would be tonight to really listen to and learn about um designating blight on a property, and then applying those principles to the project next week. And then from now on, as we get these applications for blight designation, we've, we've had the experience of this particular conversation. I wish we had done this, something like this. Remember last week with the Van Gordon? That was our first application for allocations, and we hadn't really had any any um conversation about how is this going to happen, and how do we keep track? And um what what's the criteria that Council will use, et cetera? So it was just, um, some of the concern last week was that there wasn't, that we weren't confident that there was a lot of time for the, for the public and for Council to really understand, um, and to be able to ask the right question. So that's the idea tonight, is to better understand what is a blight study, what is a condition study? And and we wanted to just take it, take advantage of the work that had already been done on our first, our first um project. So, so that's the idea, is really to better understand um the conditions and what that really means as relates to a project.
So specific questions about the allegations of blight in this study should be held until next week? Is that correct?
Really, that's ideal, that we learn, we we take advantage of the work that's been done on this particular project in the designation of the blight itself. And then what you learn tonight may bring questions about the project next week. And this will be the one and this will be the, pardon me, this will be the one and only time that we do kind of this pre-work, if you will, to really understand what the blight conditions are. So, and and how that's done, the real application of those. Did, did you have questions, Vincent? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Abel.
Hang on a second.
I guess that kind of lays the groundwork. I'm just not sure where we're going, because there are a couple of questions that have to do with um, the specific blight study that could have to do with all of these blight studies as well. Those I can see being entertained, but my concerns about some other things uh on this study uh and conflicting documentation would seem to be better held till next week. Is that correct?
That's really up to the, to the
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank, thank you, and I, and I, let me start by saying I shared Counselor Abel's concerns. I, my understanding of what this would be tonight as an agenda item is is as the city manager described it, sort of a dress rehearsal. This is what you're going to see next time. These are the factors you're going to be considering. Uh, yes, the information is presented in the, in the light favorable to the applicant, I'd say, but for purposes of the process, so that you understand how we're actually going to implement this blight uh this blight uh situation that we've talked about for such a long time. Um so it's a it's sample, it's a real sample, it's a real case, but it's a sample of what you're gonna see. And what I was going to interject with was to encourage questions and commentary about the process, about the criteria, and not about the merits of whether this project uh meets those criteria. Because what you don't wanna do is have your decision made minds tonight, even if there's no vote, you don't wanna all have your minds made up before you've heard from any members of the public or even a full presentation by the applicant or staff. So uh I think uh Counselor Abel was right on the money. This is not an attempt to hear it twice. It's so that you have the opportunity to see what this will look like and then be able to uh implement that at next week's meeting.
Can you uh kind of be our goaltender on that, Mr. Cox? And if it starts wandering the lo- wrong way, uh can you redirect us to the correct path?
Glad to do that, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Counselor Franks, Labir, Vincent and Harrison. Counselor Franks?
My concerns were uh vocalized and answered. I'm comfortable with process questions tonight and a general overview, not comfortable with any project detail. So thanks.
Counselor Labir?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing. I think Tim added some color to that pretty well. Um I just think if we hear from the property owner today, it's probably best we just listen to public comment and not answer or ask any questions. So thanks.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes, I just wanna make um is is the applicant aware of this process tonight and for next week that we won't be asking questions about the project itself? Are they aware of that?
Uh Mr. Smith?
We have a uh talked with the coun- the applicants about this process and about what we were trying to accomplish with the study session this evening. Um and their their concerns about their specific property obviously are are top of mind. They have a blight study that uh is specific to this property. But we did talk about this being a an opportunity for council to to listen and learn about the process, to have the consultant talk about how the methodology of this is uh is applied and it's applied to a specific thing. So I I understand that the the concern about uh being too close to the actual property tonight, um but this will come back next week with those questions um about specifics of the property there after the presentation next week as well. So they are in the waiting room, so presumably they've been listening to this conversation that the uh council's been having. So I assume that there's some understanding that that's what we're trying to accomplish tonight and we can move forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
I agree that we should um w- we should not be doing question and answer with the applicant tonight. That would certainly run afoul of uh what Mr. Abel and Mr. Cox had discussed. So uh I think at this point, we certainly wanna hear uh in public comment. We heard Mr. Stan earlier, I'm sure he will be back on the line. But yeah, let's avoid specific Q and A with the applicant. I don't think that's appropriate tonight for a general education discussion. There's questions about methodology uh that should probably be directed to Mr. Smith tonight, who I'm sure can share with us that methodology. Um any further questions obviously can be answered next week, specific questions related to the substance of the study. Okay, well, so with that, uh we, oh, Counselor Johnson? Sorry about that.
It's all right. I'd like to thank Counselor Abel for bringing this forward and and speaking to this. And I would just like to suggest if this kind of um process was the goal tonight, that maybe it would have been a little easier if council would have been told that in advance. Um the way it came across on the agenda, it was confusing. I can appreciate what you're doing now, but I would have liked to have known ahead of time. Thank you.
Okay, so uh let's go to public comment. Do we have anybody on the line?
Uh yes, we do. A caller whose number ends in four eight zero nine.
Okay, caller four eight zero nine, uh if you'll give us your name and your ward, you will have three minutes and we will give you a thirty second warning when your time is about to expire. Four eight oh nine?
Nine, uh if you'll give us your name and your ward, you will have three minutes and we will give you a thirty second warning when your time is about to expire. Welcome.
Okay, I think that's me. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, well, I'm calling more on the. I'm four eight oh nine. Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, sir.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. I hear a bunch of background noise. Um I'm Charles Olson, um one eight eight eight, that's me. What's that? Can you hear me?
There's a delay.
I can hear you.
Okay, well, I'm calling more on the. I'm four eight oh nine. Hello?
There's a big delay.
Yeah.
Hello? Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, just just go ahead. If you could either turn down, if you just wanna start your comments now, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, there's a big delay, but let me start talking. Okay, I tried to get in. Um you gave out the phone number, three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. You gave out the meeting number, I put that in.
There's a big delay.
And by the time I got in, there was no comment. So you need to do this a little slower so we can get a comment in. Okay, my.
There's a big delay, but let me start talking.
Okay, my comment was on.
You gave out the phone number, three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. You gave out the meeting number, I put that in. And by the time I got in, there was no comment. So you need to do this a little slower so we can get a comment in.
Sir, if you turn down or turn off your computer, if you're using a phone to call in, just go ahead and do it that way because the feedback or delay you're getting is on your end there.
Okay, I've turned off my computer. My comment is is on the blight amendment. I live across the street or down the road there from White Fence Farm. Um so I drive by that three or four times a day. Um and they are definitely just trying to blight that place. The place was never closed up, windows were broken, doors were broken into, we had the homeless living there, no water, they urinated all over the place. The property owner made no attempt to protect his property. Um finally, um he did board it up, it was full of graffiti, he sprayed off the graffiti. Um if I left my lawn like his did, um it was never mowed, never watered, uh trees are dead, falling down, there's a stream that runs through the property, it's all plugged up, um he's never made any attempt to unplug it. Um just basically, he has nev- never kept care of the property. Um and if it's a definition of blight on purpose, this is surely one. So I think Mr. Bida's amendment is appropriate for people who abandon their property, don't protect it, they finally have um private property do not approach, they didn't have that before. But I hate to think what looks like inside the building after homeless have lived there for two or three months. So um I'm in support of Councilman's Bida amendment for people on purposely running down their property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else?
We have another caller, but they have not raised their hand, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, let's just wait a few seconds. I know that we had Mr. Stan, was that one of the folks that was uh in the waiting room, Mr. Smith? Were they with the developer?
Yes, Mr. Stan is part of the ownership of the thirteen forty-seven um and his presence here uh along with Don Hackstaff is uh as the property owners to answer any questions about the process from a property owner's standpoint uh as well. We do have the consultant from Matrix, which would uh you know, essentially he's designed, is ready to make a presentation on the blight study and how that comes about, methodology used in those areas of 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 blight, but uh they are specific to that thirteen forty-seven property. But uh the idea was to have that that the process come forward or the methodology come forward.
Well, and I would encourage them if they want to do that and provide some context on the methodology, uh as Mr. Stan will do, I suppose, just give a three minute public comment with that and then specific questions we can get to next week. Uh do we have Mr. S- do we have anyone else, Madam Clerk?
We do not have anyone else that's raised their hand.
Okay, uh Mr. Bida, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, thank you. Um you know, I if we're done with public comment, I would just wanted to ask a couple of questions regarding methodology. First of all, um the i- if I'm, if I understand this, the study is is done by someone who is chosen and hired and paid for by the property owner, is that correct?
That is correct.
So this the city has no say in who they choose? Is that, is that right?
No, we do not. That's one of the differences between the fourteen twenty-seven designation and an urban renewal designation. In the case of urban renewal, the city would be the one that would contract with the blight consultant. In this case, it's the property owner.
Okay, and that really leads into my next question then, which is what is the difference in this process and the process of a normal blight designation uh determination under state statute?
Uh the principal difference is is that one there, but it's also the outcome. While the definitions are identical to the urban renewal, but because that's uh the 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 definitions the council wanted to use for uh urban re- or excuse me, for blight definition for fourteen twenty-seven, the definitions are identical, the methodology is identical in those cases. Um but the outcome, once of the property is designated as blight blighted under a fourteen twenty-seven designation, it doesn't join an urban renewal area, it doesn't change in tax statute, it doesn't change in its ability to to utilize eminent domain to affect change on the property. Um what it does do is it creates that exemption to fourteen twenty-seven uh because the property is blighted and council basically has said that the the rate of investment at that particular property probably needs to be faster than slower. We want that to happen.
But there is one difference in the process and that is in the process under fourteen twenty-seven, the uh property owner hires and selects and pays for the consultant, whereas under the uh process under states, state law, that would be done by the city.
That's correct, sir.
And do you see that as making a difference in, potential difference in the outcome?
What we uh what we, when we drafted that potential for the process, the idea was to not make the city responsible in any way financially for bringing the designation forward. So the idea was is that if they wanted, uh property owner wanted to do this, they could contract it under their their own uh own methods and uh bring that forward to the to the council. The methodology needs to remain, you know, identical as the urban renewal area. And so the idea is is that when you examine that pro- that that report, does it reflect that identical alignment with the urban renewal area process?
So so basically, what we have in this case, as we say in the in the court system, is we've got a hired gun.
Not certain what the the hired gun designation, but essentially the property owner has hired the consultant to bring the the report forward, yes.
And again, not to cast any dispersions on anybody or anything, but I'm just saying as a matter of, as a concept, what we've got is someone hired by the by the owner to come in and persuade council that this is a blighted area.
Correct.
So we don't have a neutral uh neutral presentation or party here.
We have, we don't have a party that's been uh that's been hired by someone else in order to do that analysis, yes.
All right, thank you.
We'll go to Counselor Springsteen and then um I wanna just check back in after that with public comment and then close that if we have nobody else. Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, Counselor Bida kind of addressed what my concern was. I I don't understand how you have a quote unquote independent consultant if it is paid for and hired by the person who wants them to say what they want them to say. And so to me, that's that's an oxymoron, that's contradictory. There's uh it's like if you got an appraisal on your house, uh and there were two parties who wanted that that value, but only one party got to hire the appraiser, there might be a tendency for that appraisal to come in the way that party wants. And so I I just do not see how how this works at all. I don't understand um when you're starting the process with a bias because these people are being paid for by the property owner. And my guess is over a period of time, property owners would figure out uh how to game the system even more and more, they would know the right people to hire, word word would spread around. I I just don't see how it works. I don't understand.
I have Counselors Harrison, Labir, Abel, Gutwine and Johnson. Counselor Harrison?
Well, part of my concern, thank you, uh Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, um who else would pay for it? Uh that's my question is that if a property owner, um would the city pay for it? This, it's not right for the city to pay for that. Um so who else would be paying for it if a property owner isn't? You know, I I get your concern about the hired gun concept, but we see applicants come in front of us all the time with paid people all the time. And the assumption is, yeah, they are professionals, they do what they need to do, but there are specific blight criteria. We can vote yes, we can vote no, whether we accept that, but those people coming to us are professionals, they they do this all day long, every day for various different entities. Um I I don't know who else would pay for that. So um thank you.
Counselor Labir?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to point out particularly for maybe any viewers or constituents or people watching that the council wholly and singularly decided this process. So I think we all have to take some responsibility who voted on that, um to say that this is the process we chose and it is the way it is because of us. And um I just want our our citizens to know that. As far as consultants, you know, I think I assume they get paid either way, no matter what way they uh decide to tell the developer um that they're gonna determine their property. I assume they're getting paid either way. But I also just wanna mention that, you know, it's wholly up to council. Council can vote down every single one of these, you know, blight designations if they so choose. I don't think it's wise to do so because I think there are serious areas in the community that need these type of designations to make it pencil out or make it palatable to be able to develop in these type of uh properties. And I think we'll hear more about that next week. But, you know, it is wholly council's ability to say no uh all day long if that's what they want um on this thing. I think the law was vague enough to give us that latitude to do that. So I feel very comfortable saying no if I feel like a developer is doing something uh, you know, that goes against the spirit of the law and I feel very comfortable voting no on those. But anyway, just wanna mention a couple of those things. Thanks.
So we have Counselor Abel, Gutwine, Johnson and then uh Counselor Springsteen. Counselor Abel?
Well, unlike uh recent comments, I don't think.
Well, unlike recent comments, I don't think we need to go into this with blinders on. There is, there is a very good measure. And I think it would be, the staff could vet these consultants. But, you know, if someone has approved, has found blight in 100% of the cases they have ever looked for blight, that would concern me. Would concern me much less if that percentage was even 95%. It shows there is some balance here. But I don't know. I think that without knowing the, the track record of the consultant providing the study, I think we're wearing blinders when we accept it as, you know, a valid blight survey. When a city does a blight survey, the city pays for it, and they're going to pay for it either way. And these companies know that. Still, I am not familiar with any blight study ever conducted by a city in Colorado that didn't have a consultant say, yep, there's blight there. Even if we have to, like, in the case of Colfax, for instance, the survey assembled properties. So there were four or five properties in a survey block. Even if your property was unblighted, but the properties next door and around you in the same survey block were blighted, then your property was assumed to be blighted. So there are all kinds of ways these things can be designed so as to come up with a predetermined result. And I would just like to know what the track record of these companies that, or these consultants who deliver these things to our doorstep, what track record they have. I think that is something that staff could easily check. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. A couple thoughts on this. Um, first, I do just want to echo what Counselor Labure said, that this process was created by us. And we voted for it knowing that there, there are some flaws in this process. And one of them is the, what we're talking about, which is that there, there really isn't a perfect way to address this situation. Because if the city pays for it, why in the world would the city have to pay for this? Why should the taxpayers have to pay for this? That's not a good scenario. If the industry pays for it, you know, that raises some questions. And I think that, I will say that I, I feel that our council is not easily fooled or tricked. And I think we have a lot of good people asking a lot of tough questions up here. So I, I think that it would be hard to put something past all of you. I think that, so that's one thing. Another thing is that I think this is fairly common in other industries. One that I know for sure that does this this way is air emissions testing is paid for by the industry, and then they have to submit their tests to the state. And so, you know, I, I don't think this is entirely uncommon. But I do appreciate the concern. I think that if this is going to prevent people from further, from there being any sort of value for members of the council, then maybe we do need to look into having an approved list of approved, you know, auditors. I would also be interested in just hearing from the company about, you know, how they remain objective, et cetera. In terms of percentage of findings, you know, I appreciate that the point is just to see whether or not someone's objective. But especially with the city, you're typically only going to go after or initiate a blight study on an area that you're probably pretty confident is blighted. So that may or may not sway me. But I think that having an approved list and knowing a good track record and that this is objective is fair. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Everybody's making very good points, and I very much appreciate Councilman Abel's input. It scares me, Charlie, sometimes we really see things a lot the same. I think one of the things I'd like to know, if there is actually any data that we could have regarding any of these consultants and what their outcomes are. Another way to approach this would be that the city have a list of what Councilman Gutwine said, approved vendors, if you will. The city find the vendor and then the developer pay for it. It's kind of a hybrid. I think the concern is, is that it's actually a little bit of a conflict of interest when you are picking the person to create the blight study or to do it, and then you're also paying for them. So if there's any data, if there's any lists of these consultants, and we can find out what their track record would be. You know, if council created this, then we can also try to remedy any, any loopholes in it. It's not cast in stone. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Springsteen?
Well, I, I guess I, you know, I don't completely understand this process, because I don't know who gets chosen as consultants, whether there's like one or two in the state or you, what is considered in choosing a consultant? What makes them viable? What makes them an expert? One idea I had was, and, and, and I agree, Counselor Harrison, that, that the city shouldn't be paying for this, the taxpayers shouldn't be. The property owner should be paying, but they shouldn't necessarily be choosing who these quote unquote independent people are. And so one idea I had was having perhaps, instead of just one independent consultant, have a panel of three that come from different walks of life somehow, or have a panel of citizens who live in the neighborhood who get to choose who goes onto that panel. And, you know, I, I mean, I, 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 I think that a lot of people would even be concerned about staff being the ones to vet these consultants, because, you know, we had situations like when SGI was about to come about, and, and people were told how to get around what the will of the voters was going to be. And now we're in, in a whole mess over that with White Fence Farm and other things. So I, I don't know if that's the answer, although that's, that's what we pay to have a planning department for. But, but I just think there needs to be more of a, a neutral choice somehow. Maybe a panel of three is, is, is one way to go with that. But I have no idea what it takes to be an expert in how to blight something. So I'm, I'm speaking from ignorance on that part of it. So, thanks.
Director Smith, do you, can you speak on that at all? Or do you want to speak on that, that point that Ms. Springsteen was asking about? The methodology in first getting these consultants, how they're chosen and so forth?
Uh, yes, essentially, most of the, most of the folks that do these kinds of blight studies have some level of experience with development of properties, they're planning folks, they're, they're folks that do, they understand the development of properties. I would also mention that there are a number of times when owners pay for studies that go into the designation. With the urban renewal area, even though the city would wind up paying the consultant, the, the council would still be the ones making the determination as to whether the consultant's report was valid or not or held water or, or was, was reliable in some sense of the, of the word. If the council or the, or the city were to pay for it, that would be equally as unbalanced, simply because you'd be, the, the, the party that would be considering it would also be paying for the study. So it's, it's also that, that sort of a miasma of where you get into that. So most of the consultants that are selected for this are folks that have been doing this kind of work for some time. The statute is fairly clear, the urban renewal statute. There are 11 criteria for blight, and how you determine those is fairly clear in the statute. And so going and assessing that against that criteria is something that experienced, you know, consultants do. And then they present that finding in the report. But ultimately, at the end of the day, it's those, those councils that are determining, regardless of who pays for it, whether that blight determination is, is accurate or not. So again, it's that, the, the credibility of the study is, is based on the fact that the statute is well-written, the elements of blight are well-written, and they should be apparent from the report that those criteria are there. Shouldn't be any particularly gray zone. It should be one of those things where, you know, it clearly meets that particular standard. And again, there are a lot of places where, where folks pay for that. Councilmember Springsteen mentioned an appraisal for a property, if he were selling a residential property. One party pays for that, for that in that transaction. So the, the goal here is to have consultants that are credible, worthy, and able to do that. I hear that the council's consideration of how do we make sure that we determine that? In this particular case, Matrix has done a, a number of these studies over the years. In fact, they were the ones that did the study for the Colfax area. So they're very familiar with Colfax, they're very familiar with Lakewood. They did that 15 years ago, and that was the study on which we formed the urban renewal area at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, did you have something?
I do. And I think we need to get everybody on the same page here, because we've got two different perspectives on what this process would be like. One is an, an objective value, valuation or evaluation, and the other is a presentation by an advocate for an applicant. And that's what we're talking about here. This is much more like a rezoning case, where an applicant comes in, a property owner comes in. Maybe they have a planner, maybe they have an engineer, maybe they have an attorney, maybe they have a traffic person, they have all the consultants. They're paying for those people to represent and present that information to persuade you that they should get what they want out of that application. This is the same thing. This is not the objective determination. This is not the city's designation of a blight area as an urban renewal. There's the parallel, an urban renewal, the city is, is really the applicant making the argument that this area should be declared an urban renewal area, blight is part of that process. Here with 1427, we have two, two ways to declare blighted. One is if you're already blighted under urban renewal, then you qualify. You're, you're blighted under 1427. This process is for the voluntary, owner-driven request, application for a blight designation. This is not a city application. It is an applicant saying, I want you to find that my property is blighted, and here's the information I want you to rely on. I brought in this consultant, and they're going to do the presentation. When people do that at rezoning cases, we don't stop and ask them, how many years have you been doing these kinds of cases? How many rezonings have you done in Lakewood and how many elsewhere? You judge their credit, and you can ask those questions, you obviously can ask those questions. You judge the presentation, the application in part by the credibility of the presenters. But we don't concern ourselves there with how many times someone has done this. You could have an engineer come in on one of these and say, I've never done a, a blight study before, but I've been an engineer in this county for 30 years, I've done many rezoning cases before you. You know, could have outstanding credentials, but never have done a blight designation before. You can take that into consideration, that's part of the evaluation. This is an advocate, make no mistake. This is not a neutral third party. This is an advocate who's coming in to say, I've done this analysis, and if you agree with me, you'll see that the blight criteria have been met. That's, I, I hope that's, that's clear, because this is a typical process, not an atypical process at all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cox. Counselor Harrison, did you want to respond to the question?
Actually, I wanted to make a suggestion. I think we've kind of, there's been a lot of questions that we've done. Now I'm wondering if we could go ahead and get into the presentation, and then maybe have some additional questions about process and whatnot after the presentation, because it may fill in some questions for us, because we have the people here to do the presentation, correct?
Let's get through the hands. We've got Counselor Franks, Gutwine, Abel, and Johnson. Let's just get through this first round. Counselor Franks?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Protim. I just wanted to weigh in to basically check my understanding. So my understanding of this is that an applicant may be requesting this blighted status because they may, not only do the property, they believe meets all those conditions, but they have determined that either the available allocations or the fact that they would have to go through maybe a multi-year banking plan, just the rate that they would be able to do that makes the project more problematic. So we're assessing it, and again, check me if I'm wrong, is against that, that 1% growth to say, should this project be exempted from that based on all of these conditions? And it's really separate, because they're not getting any financial tax breaks, they're not getting any other incentives. It's, is it something that we're going to set aside and say it doesn't take allocations away from the overall allocation pool, or does it? So I just wanted to check my understanding. At some point, certainly it has to meet the, the criteria, we've all agree, agreed on that. But it's really, are they going to be exempted from drawing against that pool? Yes or no? And that also takes into account, what do those pools look like year to year? Is there, is there enough available already? So I think it's more, I just want to check my understanding. And if anybody sees it differently, please, please chime in. I'm just trying to check my understanding of what our goal and roles are as we look at these applications. And certainly tonight, when we hear the presentation and hear a generic form of it, not the merits of, of this particular property. I'd be interested to see if anyone has a different understanding that maybe doesn't align with mine. So thank you.
Counselor Gutwine?
I'll actually just wait and would love to hear the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to say that Mr. Cox makes a really good point. But in order for that point to work, we have to understand what he, that we need to be skeptical observers. Don't just accept what is said by these consultants as the gospel, you know? Look at it, look at it critically, ask questions. But don't, don't just accept this as a completely objective point of view, because it's not. As Tim said, it is subjective. So we need to fulfill our roles as questioners, as folks who have to have it proved to us, as opposed to just taking things on face value. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Johnson, did you have your hand up, or was that from before?
No, actually, I failed to ask one question. But in the meantime, I very much appreciate what Tim Cox said. It's actually the advocate presenting information to us, and that's, that's the whole point. I'd like to know, usually with these consulting firms, are the folks architects or the engineers? What kind of criteria do they have to do this? Do we know, or is this something I could do too, you know?
That, that question, generally, they're, they're folks that are involved in the development industry in some kind of an engineering sort of capacity, either from a planning standpoint or an architectural standpoint, or hydrogeology, or those sorts of things. They understand the development of the properties, but they also understand the, the methodology of the statute, the way the statute is written specifically for the blighting of the, those properties. As you know, there are 11 criteria, and those 11 criteria- As you know, there are 11 criteria, and those 11 criteria encompass a great number of, of disciplines along the way. So essentially, firms that have those kinds of experts within their, their wheelhouse, if you will, can analyze it from a variety of different places.
Okay. Um, so they do have standards, because if it was, say, for instance, an engineer or an architect, and they came up with something that was really inappropriate and outrageous, I would imagine that their license would be on the line. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on the kind of license they have and what outrageousness they're, they're trying to, to pull in that hypothetical that you're, you're bringing up there. As far as a designation in the state of a blight consultant, and there's some level of standard, and you can get a license in that, no, there's no licensure for that specific, uh, criteria. Just most of the firms that do it successfully, um, and I believe credibly, are, are folks that have backgrounds in that development process from an engineering standpoint and from a planning standpoint.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Smith.
All right, let's do two more, and then we'll continue the presentation. Uh, we have Counselor Labir, and then we'll finish up with Counselor Springsteen.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, yeah, I appreciate, Tim, your point, uh, about the advocacy piece, and I think we'll hear from some of the neighbors next week, but I think we should also just keep in mind what the neighbors think about this property, or any potential property, wherever that ward or area is. I, you know, I plan on, uh, adding some color to my thoughts on this property as it's two blocks from my house and I drive by it every day. So I'm looking forward to making some comments on it as well, so. And I'm sure a lot of the neighbors will also, if they can figure out how to work our phone system. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Springsteen, and then we'll continue the presentation.
I just had one more question. What happens if, if a property is declared blighted and then we don't approve development on that property? And then the property, uh, is, uh, worthless, and then, um, uh, I, I, I just, I'm not quite sure how that would work if that happens. It seems like people could get in a mess that way, so maybe somebody has an answer on that.
Mr. Cox, Mr. Smith, anyone want to take a crack?
I, I think that's a question for, um, Mr. Cox. Can you take a run at what would happen if, um, if it was denied? Thank you.
Um, if development were denied, is how I heard the, the question. There's an application for blight, blight's approved, or blight is found, and then the application for development is not approved. Um, that's, I think that's certainly a risk for someone who's trying to, uh, to get an approval from the city, because when you look at this in the scheme of, of approvals, uh, normally you're saying, look at my wonderful property, look at my wonderful plan, look how it's going to fit in the neighborhood, uh, it'll be great for the city. In this case, you're saying, look how awful my property is, please declare it so. And, uh, so you're going to end up with a situation where it's, it's officially deemed, uh, let's just for simplicity's sake, an unpleasant to look at property. So remember that the purpose of this blight designation is just as it's applied under 1427. 1427 says how blighted properties are treated in the allocation process. And so if you get that blight designation, um, we now know, this is what it means for allocations. It doesn't mean you're going to have your rezoning proposal approved, or your site plan, or whatever application might be the next in line. It's a, it's a risk that you're going to take. But, um, presumably, if you found it as a council to be a blighted property, taking into consideration Counselor Bida's, uh, criteria for how long has it been that way? How did it get to be that way? Why is it that way? Um, if you're looking at those criteria as to why, yeah, it, it is or is not blighted, uh, you're, you're going to find that it's been an ongoing condition for some time. And those properties can be hard to develop, they can also be easy to develop because people want to see them, uh, improved, uh, and upgraded. So, um, just to reflect on what Counselor Franks said a little while ago, the ultimate repercussion of all this is, is, uh, what are you going to be able to do, uh, with this property? Does it fit that 1%? Does it meet, uh, meet the goals of, of the ordinance? This is one step before that, where you designate it as blighted, so you know whether it goes through the allocation process or not. The, the ultimate decision is, uh, is it blighted? Then if it is, this is what it means for allocation purposes. If it's not, this is what it means. So it's, it's, it's different in character from a lot of applications, but really, the, the, the risk is the same for anybody going through it, I think.
Does, does that create liability on our part if, if, if a sale fails then, because it's blighted?
Um, I, I would hope not, because you said a sale, right? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, anybody looking at it is going to have the opportunity to A, to make their own determination of what kind of condition the property's in, and B, see the city records and understand what processes it's been through. And they're going to have, they're, they're going to want to know, was it blighted? Uh, i- is it blighted at the time that I'm buying it? And, uh, do I want it in the circumstances? Uh, no, I, I, the council making an official determination regarding, uh, blight, uh, is not something that's going to be, that's going to create liability for the city with anybody else. It's, uh, you, you've got that sort of, uh, immunity, um, in the decision-making process, and then it's all, uh, out in the open, uh, and above board when someone's, uh, marketing the property as well. More, there's more risk for someone marketing the property for sale who doesn't disclose a condition like this that exists on the property.
Counselor Springsteen, anything else on that? Were you done? All right, so Mr. Smith, you were going to continue with the presentation?
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to introduce the, uh, the consultant. They've obviously been in the, uh, waiting area, listening to this conversation, and, uh, had in mind to do the presentation. Uh, they're experts in, in the process, as well as the specifics of, of this site. And so we were looking to this site to give a very specific sorts of definitions on, on how the process comes together, uh, and hopefully they will feel comfortable making that presentation, uh, under the circumstances, given the conversation so far. So, let's, uh, let's do this. Let me introduce, uh, in our waiting room, Mr. Chad Coker. He's with the Matrix Design Group. As I mentioned, uh, Matrix is a nationally recognized entrepreneurial planning, engineering, and environmental consulting firm. Uh, Mr. Coker's been with them for, uh, more than 15 years, so looks like his, uh, employment's going to stick, and he's going to be there for a while. I also mentioned that Matrix is the, um, uh, the, uh, consultant that did the original blight study for the West Colfax Urban Renewal Area back in 2005, where the council found the urban renewal area to be in compliance with those, uh, those blight conditions. We also have the, uh, owners of the property available, if there is, uh, questions that you would like to ask of them. Both of them are, uh, have been involved with redevelopment for quite some time, 40-plus years of their local, and they have a success record. So without further ado, I will put the floor to Mr. Chad Coker from Matrix Design Group. Sir?
Hi, everybody. Nice, uh, nice to see you all today. Um, got my work cut out for me, it seems, so, uh, I, as what I understand, um, let me kind of give you a background on how this process works and, and, and address some of your concerns. Um, I think originally I was just as, uh, under the impression that I was going to be presenting this particular property, but I don't mind changing course and just kind of going over a question and answer on the procedures and how it works and what consulting is. And I've been doing this for 20 years now, 15 at Matrix. Um, I've done numerous blight studies in the past couple of years. I've done the, uh, Broomfield Civic Center, Westerly Creek Blight Study, uh, Montview Corridor, I did the Fitzsimmons Campus, uh, I did a, uh, corridor study for the RTD at East Colfax and, and Peoria. And, um, I, I was actually involved in the, the blight study along Colfax Avenue. In fact, it was divided into a couple of different blight studies, and I was involved with the whole corridor all the way east to west, so I'm very familiar with the area. This, however, what you are doing with the, the blight study here is different than what a normal, um, a reason for a blight study is. And blight studies are just tools. All they are is, i- it helps a community, or it helps a, a municipality figure out a, a better way to develop areas. And I, I believe it was, uh, one of the council members, I think Councilman Abel, um, said something about a blight study having one property that's got, you know, absolutely no factors of blight, right next door to one that does have blight, and so on and so forth, all along a corridor, where you may have 150 properties, and, you know, 75 of those are blighted, and how does it seem fair that the other 75 get thrown into that designation? And the, the, the answer to that is, I think, first of all, blight studies have a very bad reputation. They're not, what, what the, a blight study is saying is not that your particular property is blighted, it is saying that this whole area as a whole could be better. And we could use blight studies to make those areas better, and that's why it's a, a development tool. Every state has, uh, their own regulations, and I've done blight studies in, in both Arizona and here in Colorado, and each state has a little bit different definitions when it comes to what makes a factor of blight. In this instance, the way that you are using this tool is you're kind of, instead of using the blight study as a, a, a development method, you know, how to get financing for, uh, you know, tax incremental financing, or, or, you know, ways to, to, to get other properties into the fold, you're using this as a, as a go-no-go on development. So what you're, what you're doing is you're, you know, you have a 1% growth cap, but you've, you've sta- stated in that growth cap that you are, you are okay with, that, with going around that growth cap if a property is, is properly blighted. Um, one other question, a really interesting one that, that Councilman Abel made, is that a consultant that does blight studies, what's our track record? And I can tell you honestly, when somebody hires us to do a blight study, as a, using it as a tool, our record's very close to 100% finding blight. It's, it's, that, that is absolutely the case, Mr. Abel, and, and you, you're, you're dead on on that. Um, and every blight consultant out there does the same thing. And the, the reason I can say that and, and maintain integrity is because the way the statutes are written, they do have 11 factors, and, uh, we can, if you really, if we want, we can go back into this presentation I had prepared, and we can kind of use this property as an example property. And this property would actually be a pretty good example property, because it's not the typical, you know, broken windows, caved-in roof, um, type of blight that you think of when you think of blight. This is more of a developmental type of blight that does tick some of the, the other factors, the six factors that we did identify. It ticks the boxes on those, but you still, at the end of the day, need to make a determination on whether you're happy with those boxes being ticked or, or not. So, um, I can go any way you guys want. If you just want to ask questions about procedure, or if you want me to put the presentation up on the screen and, and go through that, I can. I know we've spent a lot of time tonight, and I'm sure most of your, you know, I don't think you expected it to be this long, so however you want me to proceed, I will be happy to, to proceed with you guys.
Well, Mr. Coker, thank you for that, but I think before we get into any questions, and again, we want to stay away from specifics, that was kind of the ground rules we started at the beginning of this session. I appreciate you kind of giving us that, uh, 30,000-foot view. Let's stay away from specific questions, but I'm told that we have a caller on our public comment, and you'll note that we left it open a little longer tonight, just to make sure that everybody got in. We've had, uh, some phone issues in the past, so I think, Madam Clerk, we have at least one caller?
Um, we did, actually, but they just hung up. Um, hopefully they call back, and I'll prompt you if they do call back.
He just texted me and said he's gotten kicked off, so I just encouraged him to call again, so I think it's imminent. I am not sure what's happening, but he says he's getting kicked off, so it, it should be imminent.
Okay, Madam Clerk, when they call back, can you just interrupt? No, just interrupt, and then we'll get to that. Okay, does anybody have any questions now? Counselor Harrison? And then we have Counselor Abel.
What I would like, um, Mr. Coker, if that would be possible, is kind of just a 60,000-foot level. Talk, walk us through the process that, um, as you as a consultant, when you see a piece of property, what are you, what do you do, um, so that we can kind of understand the process? Thank you.
Sure, would you guys mind, uh, me putting, uh, the presentation up just to show you the 11 factors of blight, and then we can kind of go over that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Does he have the ability, uh, Director Smith, to share screen? That answers the question.
Okay, um, so I'll just kind of skip through this particular piece of property, because it sounds like you want to make that decision next week, and this is more of a informational section on how blight studies are done.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Before we start, we have the caller back.
Okay, Mr. Coker, if you'd, uh, excuse us for just a moment, are you okay with that?
Yeah, sir. Do you need me to turn off my share screen?
Uh, no, it's fine. I think council can look at that, and maybe they can generate some questions based on that. That's just the generic CRS. That's the revised statute factors.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, caller ending in 8078.
Okay, caller 078.
This is, this is Mike Muller.
Okay, Mr. Muller, yep, we've got you.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to compliment Mr. Skilling that this is probably the most pleasant, informative, and, uh, uh, reasonable meeting I've heard in a long, long time, and congratulations on, on taking it, making a very good meeting. Uh, the one question I had was, why does this, why does this developer want to blight his property? Besides the reasons of getting around, uh, 200, is there a huge tax break on his property taxes on this? And, uh, uh, I'm, you know, I'm sorry that I didn't get all the information, but I've been really fighting this computer and, uh, and trying to get on this phone call. But I understand that he only has to pay ta- property tax on the, uh, unimproved property, which would eliminate a lot of, uh, money to the schools, the libraries, and all the county functions, and even our city. I was wondering if that is the case, and, and why would we want to blight it if there isn't that big a deal on it, except for his benefit? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, um, we may have some more questions on that as far as, uh, taxes and kind of a 30,000-foot view on why some of the reasons folks would want to blight properties. But before we get to that, let's just continue on with, um, what Mr. Coker was about to present. Um, and I'm going to go ahead and just close public comment now. Uh, Madam Clerk, unless we have anybody else on?
We do not.
Okay. Well, with that, let's, uh, go to Mr. Coker.
Okay, so, the other thing that, that needs to be understood here is that what I provide, the, the study I provide, is my professional opinion, and it does not, it is not a designation of blight. The designation of blight comes from the municipality. So, uh, when you, when, when I do prepare a report, basically, I'm telling you all of the things that I've seen, and, and what I believe, um, clicks off the factors of blight, and then you, as a city council, would make the decision whether or not this property was blighted, and that is in no way out of the ordinary. Um, I've been involved with, um, probably 20 or 30 blight studies, and none of them so far have actually been denied by the city council, and, and honestly, it's usually because, um, the, the blights, the studies that I do are for municipality or for a city, and so the city has motives for doing the blight study and motives for having a, a blight designation, whether it's, uh, development-related, or tax-related, or whatever. This is totally different, because it, it puts the city in a position of basically ruling on a blight study on behalf of somebody else and not of themselves. And so that's kind of the difference, a little bit of a difference in the process that you have going on here. And being the first, first one of these, I do understand the, the, everybody's point of view, and I, and I, and I took everything that you said, and I, I agreed with everything you said. In fact, I agreed with, uh, both of you, all of you that argued one way, and all of you that argued the other. So I see both sides, and, and I do try to be a neutral party, and, and my professional reputation is at stake, so I would hope that the, the reasons I come up with are either adequate, or, you know, if you have a, a good enough, uh, reason to vote against them, then, you know, I would totally honor that as well. So at any rate, the, the Colorado statutes list 11 factors of blight, and that is the crux of this whole issue, is that there are 11 factors, and a certain number of factors must be met for a property be, to be condi- one of these factors ticked off would constitute blight. And the caller that just called in asked why anybody would want their property to be considered blight, and yes, it's 100% so that they can develop this property as residential outside of that 1% growth cap. That's why this property, he would like this property to be designated as blight. So let's go through the 11, and I'm pretty sure you probably have all read through the report I submitted, but the factors of blight are, the first one is the slum deteriorator, deteriorating structures. That's the one that everybody thinks about when they think of blight. So that's the buildings with the broken windows, or the boarded-up windows, or the caved-in roofs, that kind of stuff. So that one's pretty easy to see as you're walking down the street and you're identifying various things. The second one is a little bit harder, and that's a predominance of defective or inadequate street layout. And that could be anything from, you know, tight turning radiuses, or streets that are not big enough for the amount of traffic that are on them, streets without sidewalks. In this particular instance, this one was part of the blight designation, and that was because there was no access to the street. So you've got a property with no street access, so that's an inadequate street layout. The next one is faulty lot layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness, and it actually ties to B. Now, anybody that's anti Colorado urban renewal statute, I could see somebody arguing, why are B and C separated, and they both get a vote on this, you know, how many factors of blight are there? Because almost always, when you see a B, you also get a C, because they're so closely related. So those two basically did tick off two of the boxes. Unsanitary or unsafe conditions, that could have anything to do with, you know, whether you were in a floodplain, or a high crime area, or even not having sidewalks along a street, those are all considered unsanitary or unsafe. Homelessness can be considered unsanitary, unsafe. You know, those types of things all tick the box for unsanitary, unsafe conditions. Deterioration of site or other improvements, that's for the things that are not building-related. So that would be your overgrown lawns, or your fences that are falling down or not repaired, or that kind of stuff. Unusual topography, or inadequate public improvements, why those two were put together in the same factor is, I don't know, because unusual topography just means a property is very, very difficult to develop, because the developer would either have to bring in fill or do a lot of cut. Basically, they would have to do an awful lot of extra work just to get the property ready for development. And inadequate public improvements are if that property has even been hooked up to the utility system, or would the developer have to go to an amount of expense to bring in utilities to that property to actually develop it? So that's, those are thrown into the same factor of blight. The next one is defective or unusual conditions of title. Now, that one's more difficult, and most consultants don't even, they don't even go looking for that, because it takes a lot more effort to go back through title and find problems with title. So we typically don't even look for that one. So we're actually trying to find the four or five blight factors on 10 of the 11, because we don't do the title, rendering the title non-marketable. The existence of conditions that endanger life or property by fire or other causes, that could be a dilapidation issue, where, you know, an older building that doesn't have any sprinkler systems, or it could be not being able to get a fire truck onto the property because of access issues. Buildings that are unsafe or unhealthy for persons to live or work because of code violations, dilapidation, deterioration, defective design, physical construction, or faulty or inadequate facilities. Again, why are A and I separated into two separate blight factors? I don't know. That's just the way that it's written, and you could, if you definitely, if you have I, you obviously have A. And it's not necessarily the other way around, but sometimes, you know, it helps to have these two together. And then J, an environmental contamination of buildings or property, and that could be surrounding properties with potential for contamination, like an old gas station right next door in an upgrading position, could be considered a potential contamination of a property. Or asbestos buildings, that could be considered environmental contamination. Or it could be, you know, any of the other, you know, we basically do a full environmental assessment of the site when we do this. We review governmental records to see what kinds of environmental contamination is in the area. And then the most open-ended one is this last one, and it's the existence of health, safety, or welfare factors requiring high levels of municipal services, or substantial physical underutilization or vacancy of sites. So that's kind of the catch-all, throw-all. And I hope, as I read through that list, all of you are thinking in your mind, wow, it would be really easy to blight almost any property out there. And you're right, it's not difficult to come up with enough designations to blight a property. So having said that, when you do see a blight study that somebody prepared, you just, you know, and it's done in accordance with these statutes, you have to make your decision, just kind of, I guess, like a jury saying, was that slum deteriorator, deteriorating structures criteria met? Was the predominance of defective or inadequate street layout met? And then, you know, if four of those are met, then you do have, by at least Colorado urban's law, a blight condition. And that's what we came up with, we're not talking about this property, but that's how we designate blight for properties. And then at the end of the report, we say, out of those 11, we identified factors within those 11 that would tick off five of those boxes, or six of those boxes, or seven of those boxes. And that's, and then we would say, based on that, we believe that this property could be considered blighted. Anybody have any questions?
We do have Counselor Abel. Your hand is up.
It should not have been up. Thank you. Probably from where you ignored me before.
Hmm, that is true. I haven't allowed you to speak at all tonight. I apologize for that. Maybe this is Mr. Smith or Mr. Coker, but I did have a question, just to follow up. We did hear on the caller, and that is interesting about some of the, whether it be tax implications of a blight property. Can you speak to that, maybe Director Smith, about what happens if, apart from just 200, what happens with the property as far as taxes and so forth, once it's declared blighted?
Well, in this particular case, because this is a 1427 blighting condition, it would not have any tax effect on the property or the property tax. That's one of the reasons why we bring up the fact that we want to make sure owners are aware of the fact that because it's not getting absorbed into an urban renewal area, there's no change in the way that the tax goes. Addressing Mr. Muller's a little bit more specific question, every property is assessed based on the land, and that largely has to do with the location within the context of other properties around it. As you know, properties in the area tend to rise together or kind of fall together at the same time, but they tend to stay together because they're based on their geography, that location, location, location that you hear so much about. The other part that's assessed on there are the improvements, and I think that's what Mr. Muller was getting at, is that when you put improvements on the property, the value of the property goes up. So if you build a building, or you do those kinds of activities where you have improvements to the property, the value of the property goes up, and so the amount of the tax doesn't change percentage-wise, but because the valuation is higher, the amount of tax is increased overall, because the property is now worth more because you've invested in it. And that's one of the development objectives of economic development, is to get investment into the area so that property values rise.
And so that we're clear, the blight designation then is just a creature, what we've been discussing is just a creature of 1427, and does not extend past that?
Correct. It doesn't have a tax implication in this case.
Anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Coker? Well, thank you, Mr. Coker, for joining us. I guess we will see, oh wait, we have Counselor Vincent. You're muted.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that this is what, the city manager, okay, never mind. I think this is what we just wanted for the overview, correct?
Yeah, this is exactly what we wanted to do. We wanted to have a chance, actually, I think this has been pretty helpful, I hope so, to have this conversation about how blight is determined. And I appreciate Mr. Coker's presentation and how candid he's been about how this is actually done. So that's what we were looking for. So the questions around this specific property itself, be thinking about that for our meeting next week, a week from today, when you'll actually be taking action on this particular project.
Thank you.
Counselor Springsteen, and then Counselor Abel.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a follow-up to this list of factors, which is, if we, as a counselor, then, if we're supposed to get into the motives of a property owner, and whether they brought on these factors of blight somehow, is that part of your report in some way, part of the determination, or are you just observing what exists at the time, and not reading into the motivations, or how it looks a year before?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman, and I do agree that we can tell when somebody has let a property go down on purpose over the last, you know, few months or something. That's something that's, that I would not necessarily consider blight. Now, if, say a tenant or something, for the last 10 years that they were living at that house, was slowly letting it regress into dilapidation, then yeah, that would be considered blight. But if somebody just decided, I'm going to stop mowing the lawn so that I could get my property blighted, we don't look at that as blight. What we're looking at are things that have been around for a while. So we're looking at, you know, like paint peeling, you know, paint doesn't peel within six months. It's, that's a process that's taken years to happen. Or we're looking for shingles missing, you know, due to windstorms and never being replaced, or that kind of stuff. That's the dilapidation, the slum and deteriorating structures. Now, yes, you could, if there was another firm out there that was doing blight studies, and they only had the fault, or which one is it, the deterioration E of site or other improvements, somebody could come in and say that because the grass is more than 18 inches high, that one ticks the box. But I wouldn't do that, because that would kind of, especially if that was the only factor of blight, I wouldn't be able to do that with a straight face and be able to report it. Does that make sense?
So is it kind of a time factor, like a matter of years?
In a way, it is. Now, the very first caller that called and was talking about the white fence property, and how homeless people have moved into it, and have, you know, honestly, regardless of when that happened, that would probably be considered a factor of blight at this point in time. Number one, it's a health and safety issue, and he even did point out the fact that he would hate to see what the inside of that building looks like now. And, you know, that kind of thing can happen pretty quickly if you let the wrong kinds of people onto that property. They could cause, you know, an unsafe condition in that building, and by just, you know, destroying the plumbing inside, or, you know, pouring concrete, all of that stuff would start ticking off factors of blight pretty quickly. So take, when you are judging these properties, and somebody comes across, and I don't know the history of that white fence farm place, but it sounds to me like if I were to go do that, you know, tomorrow or something, it would, you know, I haven't seen it, but there would be argument that you could find enough factors of blight, even in that six months that that property's been shut down, just based on how bad it's gotten. Now, having said that, again, you're just making a go-no-go decision on whether or not you're going to let them redevelop that. And so kind of what you're saying is, is this property in the condition it's in right now better off than it would be if we let them build a, you know, housing complex on it, or is it better off now, or would it be better if we let them build an apartment complex on it? So that's really what you're doing, is you're making a go-no-go decision. So if you had a vacant property in the middle of an area that really needs to be developed, because it's right along the RTV corridor, is it better to leave it vacant, or is it better to build an apartment complex on it? And all we're doing with this blight study is giving you ammunition to make a go or a no-go decision on development.
Counselor Abel?
Yes, Mr. Coker, thank you for being candid, and you handled this very adroitly, coming into tonight, expecting to give one presentation, but instead giving us good instruction and education. I do want to see if you agree that blight designation, the way I understand the state's legislation and ours, is that blight designation is intended to cure the blight. Is that correct?
A blight designation is to give you a tool towards development of a particularly difficult property to develop, so yes.
To cure the blight.
That is correct.
Thank you very much. We'll talk further about that next week, I'm sure. But thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Sure.
Counselor Vincent? You're on mute.
Dang, sorry, thanks. I just want to make sure we don't get too much into the particular Lamar property, simply because I think this is a really good example of what we had been talking about at the beginning, that neighbors would know, businesses would know, and actually, in point of fact, there's probably a couple members on this council that are very knowledgeable about that particular parcel, you know, within the last 15 years or so. So I just want to make sure that we don't get bogged down in a conversation of length of time, and any of that. I was fearful that we were starting to go into the particular property, so thank you.
Counselor Bida, and then Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just one comment real quick, and thank you, Mr. Coker, for your presentation and discussion. However, I have to respectfully disagree with just one thing that you said, which is that under 1427, if we're making a blight designation determination, that, the effect of that determination is not to decide whether or not that property can be developed. That's really not the effect of that determination at all. The effect would be is whether it can be developed outside of the provisions of 200 or out of 1427, whether or not the provisions of our strategic growth initiative apply. If they apply, it can still be developed, it's just going to have a little bit different set of rules. If it doesn't apply, it can still be developed, but the rules are going to be a little more relaxed. So that's really the difference, not a black or white, yes, you can develop, no, you can't. So I just wanted to make that clarification, that's all. Thank you.
Sorry, I actually do agree with that. I probably didn't say that well enough. You're correct. It's not whether or not it's developable, it's whether it, yes, could go outside of your 200.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Boy, this has been a very good presentation, and thank you, Mr. Coker. My question is more for Tim, and maybe Kathy, and Robert. When the city is getting information, maybe like the white fence farm or other areas, the folks have got concern of it deteriorating, at what point is code enforcement called in? And if there are some things that, you know, mattresses and all kinds of things, why aren't we enforcing some of our code violations with these things to help pull property out from that kind of deterioration? Because basically, when it starts at one property, it just starts to go into other areas as well. It's hard for the, all the adjacent property.
I, I can address that, Counselor. First of all, a number of the things that we've, that we've heard about are as blight factors or that we either experience or, uh, understand to be blight. I don't know how many times tonight we've heard broken windows and things like that. Sort of classic example of a, of a deteriorating property that's not, uh, being maintained well. Some of those things are not code enforcement issues. Code enforcement deals with mostly the condition of the property and activity on the property as opposed to the condition of structures. There's a whole code of, uh, building regulations. Uh, and it's, uh, my mind is drawing a blank right now on the name of it. It's, it's a code beyond the International Building Code and the Residential Code and the Fire Code and all that. There's another code for property maintenance, I guess is one, one name for it, that requires you to admit to fix a broken window or it's torn screen or a storm door that's hanging off. It's, those sorts of things are within the, the scope of that code, which we don't have. And the reason we don't have it is it's, it's a, it takes you to a whole new level and puts you in a different category in terms of oversight of private property. But that aside, uh, we may well get code enforcement complaints on a property that's in that condition. If it's got broken windows, there's a pretty good chance that the weeds are too high or there's mattresses or other things stored outside that aren't supposed to be stored outside that violates our code. So there could be a parallel code enforcement action going on while this process is underway. And they could have some impact, one on the other. And I would just point out that, um, when we're talking about the process and how we, we get to this, know these questions that we ask, the 11 factors are right there for the, uh, the, uh, consultant to present. Okay, number one is this, I find this, uh, I believe there's blight there, in my opinion, because of these conditions and they show you pictures and they tell you about. They go through those and at any hearing on one of these, that's what you are all going to be doing is listening to that presentation. Do I agree with his opinion that number one is a factor on this property, all the way down the list? I mean, you get to the end of that, you're probably going to find that there's multiple examples of blight on that property. If, if the report is any good at all, they're going to help you find at least four, five, six, seven of those, uh, if they can. What are, what the amendment that was done earlier tonight will do is it gives you another layer of questions to ask yourself, to ask the consultant, to ask the applicant, to ask staff. And those are the questions set forth in the resolution we passed earlier, where you can say, um, uh, you find that the property owner has not reasonably, or not visibly, uh, depending on whether you keep that word in next week. But if you find that the, uh, property owner has failed to keep the property safe and secure and in good condition repair, there, that could be a factor in deciding whether there's blight or not. And the same thing with the next category. If they're making a determination, you shall consider the length of time a property has been vacant or deteriorated, the reasons for the condition, the condition of the surrounding properties. So this is the, the check mark, the, the checklist you're all going to go through. Are the 11 there? Which ones of the 11 are there? And then I'm going to ask, you're going to ask these questions. You're going to make sure there's evidence in the record that answers these questions. And you're going to decide from there whether that blight condition exists or not. Ultimately, that's the question.
I guess I'm concerned that, um, somehow we're not intervening sooner on some properties and allowing them to just go downhill when we know that they're, uh, starting to look more and more, as you would say, blighted. Because the way things stand right now, it does seem to me that there is a loophole in this that can be gained. And, uh, the developers understand that as well. I guess I'd like to see more proactive behavior on the part of the city to say, hey, you need to clean this up. You know, you're affecting other people. Charlie, help me out. It seems like on West Colfax, there was some land there that looked pretty bad and I believe that you were very instrumental in getting it cleaned up. And it was vacant land as well, right? Or no, wrong? You're muted, Charlie.
It was vacant land, yes. It was also, uh, had a good strip of asphalt on it. But yeah, I was, uh, collecting old tires, old trees, old sofas, old mattresses and, uh, the, uh, property owner, uh, didn't move to clean it up. But when asked, they did.
I, I would also add, um, Counselor Johnson, that we've spent an enormous amount of time with our CAT team over at the, the White Fence Farm property. It has been a continual struggle and a real drain on resources. So, um, that is something that we would like to see, um, fixed as well because of the amount of time and energy that our, our, um, police department spends over at the White Fence Farm property. And I know Code has spent time there too. I was glad to hear the citizen, Mr. Olson, say that he sees some improvements in, as of late. I'm glad to hear that because it sounds like the property owner is doing something. But, uh, yeah, it, it really is a drain on our resources when the PD and code enforcement has to go to a property over and over and over. So, so it's a significant concern.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Labir?
Yep, just a few, uh, comments. Uh, in 2018, we updated our building codes and we didn't include property maintenance, um, in that. In 2019, um, I introduced us taking a look at adding prop, uh, property maintenance codes. That went through our development committee. Uh, our development committee recommended that, uh, to the council. We take a look at that, at least for commercial property maintenance codes. So I think that was something that was in the works. But I think, uh, in COVID and a few other things, I think has really delayed the progress on that. But I do think, um, that's an excellent point from Counselor Johnson that, you know, property maintenance should be, um, an important factor. And not that, and I don't want to get into the specifics of this parcel, but I will just say briefly that, uh, the new owners have done an excellent job of cleaning it up. It was quite the mess for many years. But you'll probably hear more about that on, uh, Monday, next Monday. I also just want to mention on, um, uh, developing, I think part of the reasons that we'll also hear about Monday, uh, why you might act. So I want to push back a little bit respectfully on Counselor, uh, Bida and Mr. Coker about, uh, whether or not this is a go or no-go and, and just saying it's not. It may not be a, a go or no-go, uh, determination based on whether or not you, blight this or not, but it could have that unintended effect. And I think the reason for that is for all sorts of reasons. I could tell you this parcel used to be owned by some other people in the community and they weren't able to develop it. And we'll hear more about that, I'm sure, on Monday. But there's a lot of reasons why this could be a difficult property to develop, including it being a smaller parcel, relatively strict zoning and a former, formal, formal industrial area. So it's sort of out of place in some sense, or at least the first one to try to go, uh, to changing the block. But, you know, we'll hear about all that, uh, Monday, but I just kind of wanted to, you know, add a little context to some of the discussions we're all having. Thanks.
And I think we lost Counselor Vincent. And Counselor Vincent, if we lost you, uh, if you have any more comments and can't get back in, feel free just to call me and we can get it. Oh, there she is. Okay, she's back. To the point, Mr. or Counselor Labir, there she is, the Counselor Labir just made. I do think we actually took part of that property maintenance code. We added some pretty broad language to one of our ordinances. And I remember we were having a conversation from the dais with Code and there was a little bit of pushback because I think we were trying to have a pretty, uh, we were doing it with absentee commercial owners in town. And we were all fed up by seeing that. And we did add language to enforce that. So you're correct as to the, we did do something for the commercial piece. But the property maintenance code, which I think is actually the title of it, at least the ones that some other municipalities use, uh, we had looked into that and it, it did sort of, if you adopted the whole thing, you basically did become a city-run HOA. Um, everything from where spas can be located to height of grass and all the rest of it. It goes on and on. But just to that point, I think we did do it for commercial.
If you don't mind me responding, we, we added a couple of elements, but that wasn't, you know, we didn't, we didn't get to the meat of even the commercial property maintenance piece of it because we didn't get to rubbish and, you know, concrete and, uh, signage and different things. But yeah, but I, yeah, your point's well taken. We did add a couple of elements to the nuisance ordinance.
Right. Okay, anything else? Director Smith, is there anything left in the presentation?
No, I believe we're done with the presentation, uh, for this evening, sir. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think that will conclude this item. And thank you, uh, Mr. Coker and thank you to any of your associates who also, I think there was a couple of you that came and, uh, were with us tonight. So thank you for hanging out tonight and thank you, Mr. Coker, for being a good sport. Um, appreciate it. As Mr. Abel said, you did, uh, adapt quite deftly and were very candid and we certainly appreciate that. So thank you for joining us and we will see you, uh, next week. All right, so I think it's at this point in the meeting that we go to reports. So before I do that, let's ask, uh, our city manager if she has any reports tonight.
Um, thank you for asking. I don't have a report tonight and I'm delighted that it's not 2:00 in the morning. So thank you.
Oh, we'll get there. I still have plenty to talk about tonight. I only have, what, four hours, five hours to fill? We can do that. Um, okay, Mr. Cox, anything? All right, council reports, and I'll do it as, uh, Adam does. We'll go with, uh, Ward One. Any reports?
Charlie, did you?
Thank you. We had our Ward One meeting on, uh, Saturday. It went very well. We had a robust discussion centered around the, uh, initiative for retail marijuana. It became, uh, clear that there are quite a few questions out there. So, uh, I appreciate all of the folks that tuned in and everybody that, uh, had questions and the two folks who, uh, gave presentations. So thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Johnson, anything from you?
Well, I just would like to back you up on that. We try very hard to, uh, have ward meetings that are relevant and ask people what kind of information they would like as well. And this last Saturday was a, um, a very good example of, um, a point-counterpoint presentation regarding marijuana. Uh, both, uh, presenters were able to have some back and forth. And then we also had some excellent questions. And I'm glad to hear it. It sounds like some of the other wards might entertain this. Um, I'm certainly happy to help you with that. Thank you.
Counselors Vincent and Labir?
Yes, um, we will be having a Ward Two meeting and we're going to have, we don't have a specific person yet, but it will be somebody from the CAT and specifically addressing some of the homeless issues that we're having here in the north section of Lakewood. So everybody's welcome to attend. And that's all I have. Jacob may want to, because we may have to, uh, tighten, tighten our zoom down a little, so we may have to have questions, uh, in the waiting room. But I'll let him address that. Thank you.
Sure, uh, yeah, we are going to have our Ward Meeting, uh, fingers crossed it goes well. And, uh, we recommend anybody who has any questions to send those in advance. Because we won't, the only people who are going to be on video will be Counselor Vincent and I and the CAT team. And then also I just want to thank Charlie for finding another speaker on marijuana for his Ward Meeting because I would have been ill-prepared to, to fill that role. So thank you.
Counselor Springsteen and Bida?
Counselor Springsteen, do you have anything?
Counselor, we can't really hear you. Counselor Springsteen, we can't, you're not muted, but maybe just closer to the computer?
Oh.
There, that's good. Yep, yep.
Yeah, I wonder why it's doing that. That's weird. Um, I, I was just following up on my report last week. I, I, uh, drafted and sent a letter to Governor Polis regarding the use of ketamine in Colorado. And it has gone out into the press in several places. Um, it was covered on Fox 31 and I'm hoping to get some kind of response from the governor. I noticed that just today, there was a story out of Minneapolis where, uh, ketamine was used on somebody for the second time and he ended up on a ventilator. The Colorado Department of Health, I know, looked this week reopened, um, the investigation on the use of ketamine on, uh, Elijah McLean. And I would mention that the, the one-year anniversary of his death is coming up here on August 23rd. So people are trying to write 10,000 letters, uh, to the state with regard to that. And, um, uh, I am trying to file other complaints with the Department of Health regarding this issue. I really, really think that it's something that needs to change before we get another death like McLean. Thanks.
Um, if I may, I'd like to just remind everyone tomorrow that the Food Bank of the Rockies will be distributing, uh, uh, food to needy families. This will start at, uh, approximately 3:00 at the, uh, Phillips United Methodist Church over off of Pierce and Florida. And, uh, um, so if, if you're aware of any family, needy families in the, in our area that, that need some help, uh, please direct them to this, to the Food Bank. And, um, we're also going to be needing volunteers. Last month, we serviced over 300 families. So it's, uh, we, we get a really big turnout. There's a lot of need in our community right now and it's, that need is growing. Uh, they told me that I'll get to, um, I'll be there and I'm going to be directing traffic. So if anybody has a whistle, I'd sure like to borrow that and you could come on and watch me direct traffic or at least try. So I hope to see you there. Thanks.
I have a blinky light, Counselor Bida, if you need it.
Counselor Franks?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, did want to let folks know that this Saturday is our Ward Four virtual Zoom meeting. Uh, so we hope you all can attend. Format will be, we'll certainly do announcements, bringing people up to speed on our recent events. We then will follow with a, I'll give an update on the Housing Policy Commission, our work for, uh, looking into short-term rentals and make sure folks have a good update on that and certainly want to encourage discussion and then followed by an open forum. And piggybacking off of, uh, Counselor Bida's, um, you know, notice about assistance for the community, I want to make sure that, uh, folks are aware that there is a Colorado rental assistance program for people who maybe are getting into difficult circumstances with unemployment maybe running out. And we included information in our, uh, Ward Four newsletter. But certainly if you're in a circumstance where you, uh, feel that you or someone you know would need rental assistance, reach out to, uh, either myself or Counselor Skilling. We can connect you to that information or certainly you can even call into the city and I know they could connect you to that information. So thank you.
It's been a while since I've plugged, um, what I consider to be the city, certainly the state's best newsletter. So if you don't subscribe to our newsletter, uh, you really need to do that. You would really know all this information ahead of time if you did. Uh, Counselor Gutwine and Counselor Harrison?
Um, we had our Ward Five meeting, uh, this past weekend. Um, we did just, you know, provided updates on all of the kind of goings-ons in Lakewood and then also just tried to provide an update about, um, trends that we're seeing in Jeffco and, uh, highlighted some of the information that we've been getting through, um, Ms. Hodgson. So thank you for those reports. Um, they're very, uh, very informative. They're very, very informative. So unfortunately, we didn't have a ton of good news for our community. And, but it was, it was good to see everybody's face and just check in and see how people are doing and address their concerns. We did hear interest from our ward in talking about the marijuana ballot question, so we will potentially or probably do that next month. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And I have some names for us to use, Dana. Also, I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that South Lakewood Business Association is going to venture in tomorrow morning at 7:15, a real, live, in-person meeting at West Woods Community Church. So come one, come all, no, a limited number of people. But what we will be doing is a very, very strict safety protocol. So expect having your temperature taken and all the questions, and sitting six feet away from everybody else. You must have a mask to attend, and you must have it on to attend. So just so that you'll know that. And I'm really looking forward to seeing a lot of friends tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Millard, anything? All right, well, thank you again to Mr. Director Smith, Mr. Goldstein for hanging out, as always, very talkative. Mr. Cox, thank you, and thank you to Mr. Coker and all of our listeners. And with that, we will adjourn.